Thank you. Roll call, Vice President Manzi, Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules. The council rules are all electronic devices must be silenced at this time. Any person desiring to address the council must register indicating the resolution ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his/her name and address. Each speaker is allowed five minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four minutes, after which you will have one minute to summarize. The second bell indicates that your time has expired and we ask that you be seated. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause or public outcry allowed. When addressing the council, there should be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk's office no later than 2:00 PM on Thursday prior to the council meeting that you wish to address the council on. The subject he or she wishes to address must be identified. Any person attending the meeting who has not given proper notice to the city clerk's office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item will not be allowed to address the council at that time. Approval of minutes, February 6.
Second.
Any comments? Any statement? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Communications from the mayor.
Mayor's walking in now. Perfect timing.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How's everybody this morning?
I'm not late for calls of Mardi Gras, or the effects of Mardi Gras. Start with that. But I would like to point out that we had, by all measures, a very successful Mardi Gras with the exception of a lot of rain. On Monday, I was texting Mayor Landry in New Orleans, and I told him, you know, we may be at odds who has the best Mardi Gras, but I think that Mobile will be able to claim that we had the wettest Mardi Gras. But it was a great way to finish it yesterday with a beautiful day, huge crowds, and just a very safe Mardi Gras, family-friendly, so I think as Mobilians, we can all hold our head up and be grateful that we had a good Mardi Gras. You know, that doesn't just happen. We have all of our first responders, from police and fire to FANC, but it would not be possible if it were not for our Public Works, who do just a terrific job of trying to clean up the city after every parade. We'd be very proud of all the work they do. I'd like to remind the people that own parking lots and various businesses that it's not the city's responsibility to clean up, you know, your parking lots or, you know, in front of your buildings. So we ask you to please engage quickly and start cleaning up any debris that there may be, any trash that may be on your businesses as soon as possible because our Public Works departments are doing their job. But if the debris and trash is on your property and it's blowing into the street, it looks like we haven't done our job. So all the help we can get there would be greatly appreciated. Also, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Valentine's Day today. I woke up this morning and gave my Valentine coffee in bed because I am tremendously grateful for all that she does. And so I would say to all you gentlemen in the crowd, do not forget to make sure your Valentine has a great day today. Thank you very much.
Good advice.
Thank you for that reminder, Mayor. Hope everyone was listening.
Councilwoman Small.
I want to ask Ms. Dr. Crave to come down, please. I'd like to say good morning to my colleagues on the council, to the mayor, to the city clerk, to the audience, good morning. But we know that February, we do celebrate not only Mardi Gras, but we also celebrate Black History Month. This lady, Mrs. Dr. Crave, I'm about to introduce, I met some years ago as a church member, and I thought she was just a regular person just walking around the church, not knowing that she had very historical values inside of her that she had given and rented to not only the city of Mobile, but I'm gonna say the world. When I found out about it, I was very shocked, and I was like saying to myself, do you know what type of history you have within yourself? So I called myself going to celebrate her 50th year anniversary for what she had done, but find out that I missed it, and it's now this year, it would be 54. But it's always a pleasure to honor someone and give them their flowers while they're living. Mrs. Crave, she was one of the, one of two who integrated Murphy High School back in 19...
63.
63.
Ran away in 64.
And graduated in 64, and I think that was an honor that she had enough courage and courageous to do something like that back in the '60s, especially what the African-Americans was going through at that particular time. But I'm going to read this proclamation that I'm going to give her on today. And it reads, whereas Mrs. Darked Bridget Davis Crave is being honored during Black History Month for the courage she showed as one of the first African-American students to integrate and graduate from Mobile's Murphy High School in 1963 to 1964. And whereas the state of Alabama found in the unanimous ruling of the Brown versus Board of Education case, schools who weren't dis segregated would not receive state funds. And whereas prior to attending Murphy High School, Mrs. Crave was a student at the Williamson High School, later she studied at Bishop State Community College and Los Angeles Southwest College in Los Angeles, California. And whereas Mrs. Crave retired after a career of 34 years with the Pritchett Water Works, she served and held a certificate as a Grade II water operator and a Grade 1C waste operator, wastewater operator. And whereas at the Gulf Coast Federal Credit Union, she served as Secretary of Supervisory Committee for 17 years and a member of the advisory board for 15 years and co-chamber of the Robinson P. Aldrich Family Reunion Mobile Committee. Now therefore, I, CJ Small, council member of District 3, which she lives in my district, along with the mayor and the members on the Mobile City Council, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, February 14, also known as Valentine's Day, 2018, as Darked Davis Crave Day in Mobile. And urge all our citizens to join us in this momentous occasion done at the city of Mobile, Alabama, this 14th day of February 2018. CJ Small, council member, District 3. She works very hard throughout the district, and because of all the love that she shows District 3, I want to show you some love on Valentine's Day, too.
Thank you.
Yeah!
To the council, I just want to say a big, big thank you to Councilman CJ Small. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to ask her family, and I'll show you some of her church members and friends, y'all please stand, who came to support her today.
Good to have you all here. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, while CJ's coming back, I would just like to say congratulations to you, Darked, you're worth it. And she was also a member of Class Number One at the Stone Street Baptist Church for a number of years where I served as a Sunday school teacher. I think this is, your time has come. This is, this is your day. Your time and your destiny have met right here at the city council meeting today. This is your time. Thank you.
Adoption of the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Appeals. We have appeal of the Mobile City Planning Commission's approval of a planned unit development to allow a new off-site parking lot to accommodate an existing medical clinic at 2001 Springhill Avenue and 137, 139, and 149 Tuscaloosa Street.
Yes. Okay. I would like for our attorney to give us an update on that.
It's a long opinion, but I'll give you a summary. How about that?
We won't summary. We won't want to go further than that. Just tell us in light of the law what you recommend that we do.
The question presented, the question that I was asked to answer, is when a planned unit development is appealed to the city council, may the council attach new or different conditions to the approved plan? The short answer to that question is no. In Mobile, planned unit developments are not classified as separate zoning districts. Instead, the ordinance delegates complete administrative authority to the Planning Commission to make PUD decisions. Aggreaved parties may appeal to the council, but the standard of review is the same as any other agency appeal, abuse of discretion. What that means in plain English is, is that the Planning Commission decision may be affirmed or denied, but it may not be modified by the city council. So then your next question, of course, is should we affirm or deny the appeal? That is your job, but the law gives you some help. You're not, you're not alone in this. I will skip to the, I'll cut to the chase if I can. The role of the city council on appeal is to determine whether the Planning Commission followed the law or whether its decision was arbitrary and capricious. What you need to know here is that the city council, as the legislative authority, passed an ordinance, the zoning ordinance, which conferred upon the commission certain powers. The Planning Commission is an administrative agency of the city. It has no legislative powers. So in order to evaluate their decision, you have to look at what the ordinance says because you guys have given them direction within the zoning ordinance of how these types of applications are to be handled. And what the ordinance says is that the purpose of a planned unit development is to promote and allow multiple structures on a single site. The general rule is the zoning ordinance prohibits more than one structure on a single site. So a PUD is a way to allow that. And the ordinance says that although PUDs are most commonly multifamily residential projects, such other building groups as shopping centers and industrial parks, as well as one-family residential projects using innovative building types and arrangements, may be designed and developed under this section. In considering whether to approve a PUD, the Planning Commission is given six objectives in the ordinance. Number one, creative design, to encourage innovative and diversified design in building form and site development. Number two, flexibility, to permit greater flexibility in the location arrangement of buildings and uses than is generally possible under the district regulations. Number three, efficient land use, to encourage the most efficient and sustainable use of land, especially tracts in the inner part of the city that remain undeveloped or that are appropriate for redevelopment. Environment, to preserve and protect as urban amenities the natural features and characteristics of the land. Open space, to encourage the provision of common open space through efficient site design. Public services, to encourage optimum use of available public utilities, streets, and community facilities. Land use issues are not ever easy because, like human beings, every parcel of real estate has a history, a personality, and a place. And so what cities have learned over the years in administering zoning ordinances, which first became legal in like the '30s or '40s, is that there is rarely one size fits all. So this technique of the planned unit development was developed so that it would give everyone some space to have creative projects within their community. For example, in, under the normal zoning ordinance, all houses have to be on a 7,500-square-foot lot, they have to do this, that, and the other. But if you've got a sensitive, like environmental site, a developer may come in and want to do what's called like a cluster development or a mixed use. And the PUD looks at all the characteristics, the history, how it's going to impact, and then it's up to the commission to decide whether that PUD is worthy of being granted an exception to the normal zoning rules. So that's what these standards are geared toward. I will admit to you that the standards could be more artfully crafted, and we hope in the new zoning ordinance that's coming up, that will happen. But you got to start where you are, and we have what we have before us, which is this ordinance and this application. Again, you guys are not hearing this matter brand-new. Your only job is to determine whether the Planning Commission followed the law or whether their decision was arbitrary. What the law says about reviewing administrative decisions, first of all, the council, the council's job is to prescribe the rules, and the commission's job is to follow the rules. In this case, there are no facts in the record which show how this PUD would satisfy the six standards that I just read to you. It was not even discussed. Further, even though the PUD ordinance requires the commission to maintain a record of its proceedings and show the grounds of its approval or disapproval, no grounds for the decision appear in the record other than we grant the application, nor is there any explanation for why off-site parking lots in general, and this one in particular, were an appropriate subject for a PUD at this location. Regardless of whether the council decides to affirm or deny the appeal, the motion should read, "Motion to affirm or to accept the appeal."
Okay, I have another question. Dealing strictly with 137 Tuscaloosa, where we have a house dating back to, I believe, 1835.
1820s?
1820s, okay. Okay. And it is believed to be a part of a PUD. Depends from, from, when the Planning Commission ruled...
Yes, right now, the historic house is part of the PUD that was approved last December.
Okay. So how can it be, how can a single lot be a part of a PUD when you have an alleyway running, separating, separating 137 from 139, 141? You have an alleyway running straight through that is not a part of 1, it's not a part of 137. So how can 137 be a part of a PUD when you have an alleyway separating it from the next piece of property?
That's a great question. The ordinance doesn't answer that question. I don't know. But it's something to be concerned about. You've got a private driveway bisecting the middle of two separate parcels that are owned by two different people but are the same development.
Can we send this back to the Planning Commission, let them straighten it out?
First, let me say that it's not an alleyway that separates the medical facility from this historic house property, which is now Zone B1. It was rezoned back in 1990, I believe. The line, that piece of property that goes between these two subject properties is part of the old K&amp;B property. It's used as a right-of-way, I guess, to get over to that red light in the parking lot on Springhill Avenue, but it is a fee simple of the ownership of the K&amp;B owner. So it's not an alleyway, it's not a public right-of-way, it's a private property. In the issue, I met with Wanda Monday morning, I met with her probably for about an hour Monday morning, for 30 minutes this morning. Going through these issues, this morning was the first time I'd heard her opinion as far as these finding of facts issue. The, the issue as to the off-site parking lot, the, she says it's not allowed per se in the zoning, in the PUD ordinance. She did read under 645A2, the objectives, and it's been the practice of the Planning Commission in this city council for probably 30 years, since I think Ms. Rich and I were on the Planning Commission together back in 1994 and before that, that the city has looked at the creative design and flexibility standards in the ordinance to allow this. We have numerous churches and schools that have off-site parking that are, that are separated by public right-of-ways or other properties, they're not contingent. I have with me, I printed off this morning, the approvals from McGill Tulane in 2011, three off-site parking lots were approved across O'Shea Road from their main campus. In 2015, they came back and added on to this parking lot, here's their main campus. This parking lot has the entrance on Springhill Avenue, a couple hundred yards away from its main campus. So it's been the practice of the city to allow these off-site parking lots when, when properties were not adjacent. Obviously, Mr. Rossler, when he was serving in my capacity, felt that way, that it was proper. Obviously, Mr. Rossler, when he was sitting in Ms. Cochran's chair, thought it was proper. I think it's proper, the way things have been done. I have not researched the issue as to the need of a finding of facts, or findings of facts, as Ms. Cochran mentioned this morning. I just found out about 10:10 that that was her opinion this morning, so I hadn't had time to do that research. It's, I'm here to protect the decision of the Planning Commission and its authority. I'm not here to argue for this development or against it. I'm just here to protect and defend the decision of the PC, and I believe what we have done in this situation is the way things have been done for decades, and I don't know why it's being questioned now.
Madam.
Mr. Richardson.
Same question I asked. For 32 years, we've taken a straw poll on this council, and we have got five, four votes with the president and the vice president, and we have reversed that decision based on the law. And I think you should carry that back to the law, not past practices. You read us the law, not what we did in the past. Because if we're gonna do that, I suggest we first talk everything based on past practices. And it's just this.
In this case...
Mr. Williams.
Generally speaking, we don't, we don't discuss something that's in another district, but I think that it's really important for us to make sure we have this decision proper. I, I don't argue what our council has presented to us, but I do point out or bring up the point that I do not believe that all objectives must be met that are outlined for PUD in order to approve a PUD. Right here in our own building, how many people parked on this piece of property today? Oh, man, maybe four or five of us. The rest of us parked off-site, and we came here, and that's the way it's designed. We have so many locations where we park off-site, and that is clearly allowed in flexibility, as well as an efficient use of, of a site. And it, there is, there are so many places right now that, that won't be able to be in business if we were to provide such a high standard for PUD, especially as we grow as a city, especially as we continue to improve our downtown. There simply is not parking. In one day, 20 years from now, maybe we don't need any parking at all. So we shouldn't hold up a development now for something that really has no impact on a community, negative impact. Lastly, there is a house that I think all of us are concerned about.
Yes.
There is a house, and we can delay our decision or return it to, be bureaucratic and return it back to the Planning Commission, but the fact is, I think we all want to protect that house. It's not our house. And if we want to protect the house as a government, then I think that the government has to get involved in moving that house. And boy, that's a precedent, so I'm not sure we want to set. So I'll listen to further argument, but at this point, I think we'll allow the development and at the same time, enter into some kind of action that moves that house before they finish the development of parking lot.
Can I?
If I'm, I'm sorry, if I may add, if y'all want to send it back to the Planning Commission, we'll be glad to accept it back and do what Wanda says, an issue of findings of fact. I will state that I don't think the Planning Commission, since this property is Zone B1, has much authority to say yea or nay over that house. We have to look at the land use standards. It's not in a historic district. We have nothing to do with the demolition or removal or relocation of that house. We have to look at the land use issues, so don't expect the Planning Commission to be able to answer or solve that problem. It is a problem we're, we're aware of, but it's not under our jurisdiction. Thank you.
Okay.
We have a landowner, too, that, best, I'm not getting in the way of this point, if at some point, I think he may be able to help us with this whole solution, but our representative, rather, best.
Ms. Rich.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cochran, can we look at the parking requirements that are talked about in your document to us as far as the number that would be required for the square footage? Because if I'm reading this correctly, it was expanded in 2006, and 38 parking spaces was, was required. But because they had that shared PUD with the old K&amp;B, CBS, whatever it became, they more, they met that need without having to expand that. The proposal that's before us with the appeal deals with proposing 73 parking spaces, even though the square footage is not changing, and so 38 would be required. Am I correct about that?
Yes. There is a pre-existing 2006 PUD which grants the clinic property the authority to use the drugstore property for shared parking. And that PUD was granted administratively and appropriately because when they did the calculations in 2006, a total of 89 spaces were available between the two properties, and only 81 spaces were required. The current... The current development is going to do a wholesale renovation, but they're not expanding the footprint.
Square footage.
So they're going to take in the pot cochere, that will require an additional one parking space, and there is room on the site for the parking. Now, that stated, if I understand, why the developer might not want to be in business with his next-door neighbor. That building is vacant, apparently it's owned by a company from Louisiana. I have not been privy to any of those discussions, and I think there was some fear expressed by, I think when the engineer was here, that the Rite Aid property could, you know, yank their parking away, because the private easements that were recorded actually expire in about seven years. So I think they were thinking long-term, what are we going to do in seven years when these easements expire? But I think what the, what they failed to appreciate is that the 2006 PUD is not going to go away. No matter what happens with private easements, we have a public document, and the ordinance says that the final development plan is binding on the owner, his heirs, successors, and assigns and shall limit and control the issuance and validity of all permits and certificates. So I'm sure he wasn't aware of that zoning law when the application was done. I don't know what they knew when they knew it, but they can reasonably rely on this, because nothing is going to happen with that 2006 PUD until it's repealed, replaced, or something else. And I want to say something here about, you know, everybody likes candy, and it's Valentine's Day, and Beth Rich gave me a box of fabulous Valentine candy. It was so sweet, and I opened it up, and I looked in the box, and they were like, I thought, now which one of these is going to be my victim? And I was, of course, looking for the one with the nuts in it, because that's my preference. But not everybody likes nuts, right? So this is, this is a long way of saying this is the same way. We can talk all day about whether we think this parking lot is a creative design, whether it's flexible, whether it's a good idea, there's all kinds of conversations we can have about that, but make no mistake, my opinion isn't about the parking lot, it's about the way the decision was made. If you look at the record of the planning commission, I'm not suggesting that there be detailed administrative findings of fact. All I'm suggesting is, is that whenever you're dealing with land use, there are property rights at issue, the rights of the developer, the rights of the community, the rights of the abutting property owners, and this site, there was no analysis of what's going to happen, what, there's so many unanswered questions that need to be discussed in public, and so that all the stakeholders have an opportunity to appear and contribute to that conversation. I am neither for nor against parking lots, and I know that there is a great deal of fear that somehow this is, you know, some kind of swipe at the planning commission. It is not, that is not my intent at all. I was asked for a legal opinion, this is what the law says as I see it. If Mr. Anderson wants to produce something different, I am open to it.
Madam-
Mr. Richardson.
This item disappear as in District 1, and Councilman Williams said it right, and we are all concerned about. It's not easy to have a house located in a district other than a historic district designated as historic, a one-house in a community designated as historic. That's not, that's not easy to do, there's not very many of them in the city. Well, the state has designated this one house, not a bunch of houses, but this one house as historic, and it's on the verge of being knocked down, and they're sort of telling us like, okay, this business has purchased this property, and they're going to do anything they want to do. I said, they can't do anything they want to do unless we let them do it. They can't do the last word, we have the last word. And I say this, I say we lay this over one more week. If nobody saved that house, send it back to the planning commission, and I think that would be a wake-up call for who owned that land. I think they'll see the direction we're going in. That's what I say, send it back to the planning commission.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Davis.
If I, I want to go back to what Ms. Cochran said, and my understanding is that it's your opinion that there is just insufficient evidence on the record for the council to determine whether or not the planning commission abused its discretion. Is that correct?
Correct.
So all these other issues about whether the parking lot could have been better designed as a 55, 75 lot places, and the historic nature of the house, all of these are really irrelevant to what's before us. What's before us is whether the planning commission abused their discretion, and we've got our lawyer telling us that in her opinion, they did. And so, in my mind, unless we're willing to ignore the advice of our lawyer, we send it back to the planning commission.
My clarification, though, Madam Clerk, going back to what Ms. Cochran said about in 2006, the PUD that was in place takes into account the drugstore parking lot that the medical clinic was able to use.
Yes.
And what you told us is that that stays in place, right?
Yes.
So if that is the case, does the applicant, then the medical center, actually need any more parking if that 2006 agreement, it stays in place?
I don't know how to describe what you need. I mean, do I really need another piece of-
Well, I'm just saying, would there not be sufficient, but would there not be legally sufficient amount of parking with-
But yes, under the ordinance, it meets the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance.
And with the 2006 PUD in place, then there would be no need for an extra off-site parking?
Subject to me being proved wrong. I don't know, it's, there's a lot of moving parts, and there, you know, but as best I can tell, yes.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Small.
I think that what I get from this council, that we probably just need to send this back to the planning commission, and need to proceed from there.
Well, if we're going to send it back to the planning commission, then we need to get the proper motion to do whatever it is we need to do.
Madam Clerk, I'd like to, this is a unique situation, I'd like to call the applicant, the representative applicant, just so we have all the, all the facts in front of us when we make this decision. I don't see what the planning commission is going to do differently, that it's going to be beneficial to anyone, and so we need to know what our objective is by sending it there, but if you wouldn't mind.
Oh, you meant the applicant for the, for the development, not the applicant for the appeal?
That's right.
Okay. Sorry. State your name.
My name's Larry Smith, I'm the civil engineer for the project, and first I want to thank you for your time, this delicate matter, and I want to address a couple of the things that I've heard brought up. As far as the PUD, I hear what you're saying, as far as the easements might expire, and honestly, the opinion that the planning commission had was, and the attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was in their minutes that that document was actually no longer valid, based on the fact it wasn't re-recorded after the last PUD, but what you're stating is the PUD is there no matter what. But if y'all have ever driven through that parking lot, it's not being maintained, the responsibility of the maintenance is on the owner that's in Louisiana of that parking lot, and whenever my client went to go purchase this property, they looked at extending the easement, which would also protect their, extending the duration of the easement, before they bought the additional property for parking, which would protect their ability to enforce upkeep of that. Y'all's PUD, to my knowledge, does not have any validity on whether or not they're going to upkeep that parking lot. What was protecting us was the easements that were in place for them to maintain it. If that expires in seven years and nothing happens on that property in seven years, if you've driven through it lately, you'll see how bad it can be. There's potholes through it, it hasn't been resurfaced, it hasn't been restriped, and so, yes, the ability to park on there is, will be as long as that PUD is enforced, but who's going to require them to come in and repave it? Who's going to enforce all these different actions that is currently not being done by the current landowner? As far as the parking size, I can't speak to how they came up with the number of parking they wanted. I know to begin with, I had 90-something parking spaces, and when I saw the trees that were on the property, I said, there's no way we're taking down all these trees, and we shrunk it down to where we're at now. I can tell you from dealing with developers, they normally don't like to build more than they need, I mean, parking lots aren't cheap. So if they think this is the use and the amount of parking they need for their clientele, I don't think they're going to pay for an extra 40 parking spaces, probably around $200,000 just to have an empty parking lot. And then, as far as the different tests or the qualifications for the PUD, the application that we are required to submit has a very detailed list of what all we have to submit with PUDs, that's not been on it, I've never had to submit one for a PUD before. We'll gladly assist where we can, if this goes back to the planning commission, but I agree with one of the comments, that I think we're, we'll probably be right back here whenever that duration comes, because if they approve it in listing their statements why, I'm sure it will be appealed back to y'all, and I think we'll still be here, we're putting in the eight-foot fence, we're putting in the timers that have been discussed on the site lighting. We're trying to do as much as we can. As far as the house, I've mentioned that to the, my client, and if somebody wants it, we're not opposed to it, but nobody's come forward yet saying they want to take the house. And so unless y'all have a lot somewhere we can go take it to, I don't know what else we can do. So any other questions for me while I'm here?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Richardson.
The person who made the appeal, the reason why we're here today is because Mr. Dr. Wells appealed the decision of the planning commission, she's here, and she's had her hand up several times. I think we have left, Mr. Wells.
Ms. Wells.
I am Dorothy, I am Dorothy Irvine Wells. I have resided at 134 Florence Place for the past 40 years. I do, I am glad that I appealed this. The water runoff would be severe, property damage would decline, and there would be rodents and unwanted visitors. My house is on this, the whole land is on this land, that's why we have such water runoff. It's even going to be more severe with a paved parking lot. And I want to bring up briefly, too, about the existing, an existing clinic, it is not an existing clinic, because CNR, they were physicians' pain specialists, they don't have a current license there. Pulmonary associates of Mobile, they have a license at 6701 Airport Boulevard near Providence Complex, Providence Hospital, but they do not have a license at 2001 Spring Hill Avenue. It's not an existing, so therefore, if it's not existing, then 2001 doesn't need a parking lot because of, because there's nothing there. It's a vacated building, it has been vacated for a little while. And I also want to bring up, and this comes from jumpstart, 1990, we were not notified that this was on an applicant to be rezoned, 137 Tuscaloosa, to be rezoned from an R1 to a B1. Something happened, I have an application here, and it said that Carol Wilkerson was supposed to list the names. The planning commission conveniently said, oh, they had nine employees looking for the box, and they couldn't find it. Well, I know that that box didn't exist, because I've talked to the Wilburns across the street, they didn't get a notice. I live on Florence Place, and Al Caluno, who was in the minutes stating that he did not object to having this from an R1 to a B1, because they wanted a counseling center, Al told me just recently, he said, he had recalled that, he said, I never went down for the hearing, but somebody mentioned something over the fence, and it could have been Carol Wilkerson or the Gwens, they said, oh, would you mind if we had a counseling center here? And Al said, no, a counseling center would be fine. His name is the only one listed in the minutes, not mine, and then there's a letter sent to Carol Wilkerson, but not to me, and Audrey Fields on Tuscaloosa Street, she's been there longer than I have at my house. She says she did not get a notice, and she keeps up with everything. And then also Linda Boswell, across the street from me also, she did not get a notice. So I'm challenging the zoning. How was it done? There's no, my name is not listed here, there's only, the only thing that's attached is to Ms. Carol Wilkerson, and this meant the public hearing on the above reference zoning would be held on Tuesday, June 26, 1990, at 12 noon, at this, at the council chamber in City Hall, that was on Royal Street. I didn't hear anybody else get beeped. We suggest that you and your representative be present at this hearing to answer any question. I didn't get this letter, I objected when she wanted to become a B2, and people went downtown, but I didn't get anything, so it's invalid. It's incomplete, because this application states that if everything is not filled out, if the applicant does not notify property owners within 300 feet of the application, it's incomplete, therefore, it's invalid. It's not really a B1, and I'll challenge this, I'll continue to challenge this, if this goes through to become a parking lot that will adorn my whole backyard. Thank you.
Ms. Cochran.
Do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Ms. Cochran, if we, if we deny the appeal, the next step would be circuit court? Is there a next step?
If you deny the appeal, that means you are affirming the decision of the planning commission, and the decision would stand, and then it would be up to some affected party, whether it's the neighborhood or the historic, whatever, to file a lawsuit in circuit court.
But if we reverse the decision of the planning commission, we send it back?
Then it will go back to the planning commission for further proceedings. Now, I do not know what that means.
We don't have to know.
No, I meant in terms of, I know that the zoning ordinances usually have rules that say if your application is denied, you cannot resubmit for a period of months, and I don't know if that is the case here. I didn't see anything in the code.
Doug and Richard are discussing that.
It's not a rezoning.
It's, you know, it's a PUD, but, yeah.
I just talked with Richard, and we agreed that we would have another public hearing. Do you notice to have a public hearing start over, so all the affected makers would have their own?
But it wouldn't be six months waiting period.
No, it's not, it's not a rezoning, so I didn't think so.
Do you have a codes section on that? Do you have a site on that? Is it because it's not a rezoning?
Let that argument be made.
We want to do the right thing.
Okay.
Start up.
Yeah.
We want to do, if we're going to have to make the findings of fact, we're going to have a hearing again to hear the evidence.
Madam Clerk, I'm prepared to offer a motion.
We have one more person signed to-
Okay.
Jamie Betbees.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Members of the council, my name is Jamie Betbees.
Members of the Council, my name is Jamie Bett Bees. I reside at 1210 Selma Street here in Mobile. I'm here today in my role as a member of the Mobile Historic Development Commission. I was asked to come here today and speak in favor of the appellant, Ms. Wells. And by our President Katrina, Katerina Eckles, and our Vice President, Stephen McNair, neither one of whom could be here today, so they've asked me to stand in for them. So thank you for giving me the time. The Mobile Historic Development Commission is very concerned with process, of course. And we think that Ms. Cochran's analysis is crucial. I agree with Mr. Richardson and Mr. Daves that the key issue here for the Council is whether the Planning Commission acted arbitrarily and capriciously. I think it's clear that they did by not following the procedures and by not doing the proper public hearing. I don't think that it's automatic that this would get approved and would come back here because I think that these criteria that are listed in the ordinance are very important criteria that have to be considered carefully, and they have to be met in order to say that this is an appropriate application for a PUD. That's a question for another day, but I think that the issues that have been brought up by this Council today are significant to that. Of course, as the Historic Development Commission, we are concerned primarily with the historic building that is on-site, that was built in the 1820s or '30s, later added on to in 1871. Very significant architectural style for our city, but also the property itself. The property with the gardens that are there are significantly historic and were part of the application process, as Mr. Richardson noted, to have this individual property listed on the National Register of Historic Places in 1991. I think that's very significant for our city. We bill ourselves as a historic city that creates tourism, that creates interest in our city. And if we just ignore the individual properties that have been individually listed on the National Register of Historic Places and just tear them down or remove them to a different location, then we run the risk of losing our status and being able to call ourselves an historic city that protects historic properties. The MHDC is not only concerned with individual historic buildings, but we're concerned with the preservation of the integrity of historic neighborhoods. And so we can sympathize with Ms. Wells and the other residents of Florence Place that would be impacted by the demolition of an important historic residence for the sake of having another surface parking lot, when, as we've heard already here, there are two surface parking lots in existence that adequately provide the needs for parking for this facility. So it would be a travesty to either destroy or even to remove an historic residence for the sake of another surface parking lot when there's already adequate surface parking there. And so I was asked by the Historic Development Commission to come and make those statements to you today, and I thank you for your time.
Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Smalls.
You stated that you had spoken to some neighbors and Mrs. Wells. Did you ever speak to the landowner himself?
I have not personally spoken with the landowner, and I don't know that any of the Commission members did. But we, the Commission is simply concerned about the property. I know that there are, that there have been some efforts made by the landowner to try to find somebody who could take the building and relocate it to another property. I have no idea the status of any of that.
But do you know who talked to him, or was it hearsay, she-say?
I do not, I'm sorry.
That's the issue that I have, that no one had not spoken to the landowner himself. All about historical. Don't get me wrong at all, but again, it's communication, and especially if you're not talking to the person that owns the house, owns the land. I mean, you're just going around the bush. But that need to be done, is that you need to talk to them directly and everything. Thank you, though.
Madam Clerk. Mr. Daves.
Mr. Bett Bees, I can't speak for my colleagues, but let me kind of let you know where I am on this. And you, as to what we're going to do today, I've made that fairly clear. I suspect, although, as you pointed out, it's not certain, that's what's going to happen, is going to today go back to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission will reconsider it, and I suspect the Planning Commission will make the same recommendation to us that they, that's before us today. So then we get back to where we are with a good record. And at that point, I think that if the house is to be saved, which I fully support the house being saved, but there needs to be a clear plan before, at least before me, at that point as to how that's going to happen. Because I'm going to be, I'm just going to be, I'm going to be inclined to let the project go forward unless someone has stepped forward to resolve that issue. The land, you know, thirty years ago, rightly or wrongly, thirty years ago, the land was changed from R1 to a B1. And I think that, in my mind, that project needs to go forward. So, you know, recently, with respect to the Kennedy House on Government Street, the Council delayed, 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 and finally, an organization stepped forward and is restoring it. I'm delighted about that. And I hope that in this, in the meantime, between today and when this matter comes back before us, that you and the other parties who are interested in saving that structure will come up with a plan for doing it.
We'll be happy to speak with the owner. We'll be happy to talk with other preservation interests and see what can be done because it is important to do that.
And please, I'm, I don't, I don't, sometimes when you're sitting up here on the dais and someone's standing there, it looks like you're being lectured to, and I don't, I don't mean to be doing that. I just want to be clear about where I will be the next time this comes before us.
Absolutely.
Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Smalls.
Thank you, Jamie, for coming. We did get an email from Ted Flott asking about the house, requesting that the city provide funds to assist with moving the house. I couldn't tell if you were advocating leaving the house there completely, if that's really what you wanted, or if, depending on, of course, what happens with the Planning Commission, at least to move the house. I mean, is it kind of like one or the other, but let's say the house?
What I personally would advocate for, and I think the MHDC would also advocate for, is leaving the house in its current place because it was important in its historic context. It can certainly, I mean, this is not one of those homes that is dilapidated or would be on a blight list or anything like that, that needs to be torn down. It is a house that could certainly be restored and lived in. And you have, it's completely surrounded, except for the medical clinic, by other residential properties with people living there. And it is a beautiful property that someone would be proud to have as their home.
But the area itself is not necessarily historic. It's just the one house.
Well, the, it is not in a city-designated historic district. That is correct. However, Florence Street, which backs up to it, was built in the 1930s or '40s and is a very historic neighborhood.
More than likely, we just had some of those houses.
And is adjacent to it, and you have wonderful families that live there. And it is, it would be a shame to have more parking lot encroachment into these residential areas.
But at the end of the day, saving the house would be.
That would be.
If the Planning Commission comes back and gives us the same opinion, basically, or the same recommendation, you will have a little bit of time. If this goes back to the Planning Commission, like Mr. Dave said, you will have some time to look at the house in an effort to maybe move it if that's what you need to do, which would be great. I don't know if the city is able to help fund the move, but it's certainly something that, you know, you all can start looking at and figuring things out if that's the way you need to go.
And we have been involved in moving properties in the past, as you know, so it can be done.
Okay. Yes. But I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, I think that she has wanted to say something about the house, or she has some information about the house.
I know right now.
Please state your name.
I'm Paige Clark. I'm with the Mobile Historic Development Commission. I work for the city under Build Mobile. And this property, I know right now, I think the historic nature is something to consider possibly when it goes back to planning. But just so y'all are more informed with the National Register process, if a house is indeed moved, it can possibly retain its National Register status. Site is considered. But say it was moving to an area like Oakley, the nature, the style of this house could more than likely still be listed individually on the National Register of Historic Places. What makes that area unique as well, and this property in particular, is that the rear portion that's older was actually a garzeneer. I can think of maybe two that are still left in the city. It was part of a larger property complex, and the area is called Somerville. The apartment or condominium complex is right back there, is named after it. A lot of summer homes were built out there. So this is unique in the fact that, too, it's kind of a Greek Revival summer home. So just to give you all a little bit of background on that.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Richardson.
Yes, I'm going to offer motion after I make this comment first that I don't believe the house is going to be to stay at that location. That's my personal feeling. When Mobile Infirmary got ready to build its emergency room, they took the land leading to there. There was a ditch running down through there, and it was a historic house over there. Where there's, when you turn into the emergency room entry, there's two big buildings there on Spring Hill Avenue. To build the first building over to the right on the east side, there was a house over there, historic home. Like the same kind of discussion because it was going to tear down. They moved the home. The home is alive and well today, maintain its status, and we went on to build those two buildings. And I think that's what probably would end up happening, but that's not what we are faced with today. I would like to offer motion that we reverse the decision of the Planning Commission.
Any discussion?
Madam Clerk, I'm going to, I will be in opposition to the motion. I want to make it pretty clear that I really, with all respect to our Council, do not believe that all objectives stated in the City Code, Section 645A1 and A2, must be met in order for a PUD to be approved. I do not believe that the Planning Commission acted arbitrarily or did so anything contrary to law. And I believe that the property rights, especially post-purchase or with the property owner and all the other conversation, while I want to reserve the house, preserve the house, I have great appreciation for historic preservation and have always been so since I came here. I simply don't think we ought to set a precedence of sending things back that we don't understand and disguise it as something that the Planning Commission did arbitrarily, capriciously, or otherwise against the law. So that's my position. Thanks.
Part of the discussion. All in favor?
All in favor reversing the Plan Commission.
Reverse.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye. Opposed.
You opposed?
Opposed.
Not enough votes. Not enough votes.
There are not sufficient votes to oppose the reversal of the decision, so.
So it goes forward?
It's the motion to affirm the decision.
You don't have to do that. It simply was not the.
There's one of the votes to. Okay.
Stand.
All right.
Madam Clerk.
Yes.
I'd like to say, Ms. Craver and her guests, if y'all like to leave, you all can do so at this time, you know? At least y'all want to stay for the whole meeting.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the Council. Reggie Hill.
In the absence of the Chairman, Vice President Manzi, who I send my best regards to, wish him a speedy recovery, Madam City Clerk, members of the Council, Mayor Stimson, citizens of Mobile, good morning. I think we're still in mourning. Okay. I rise today, Reggie Hill, 200 Government Street. I rise today wanting to impart an opportunity for us to look at the budget and how we will obtain resources as a city and how we will continue to grow as a people. Last week, we had a very intense conversation and dialogue about the CIP, which I believe has been put in place to do great works for the city. I also want to commend Councilwoman Rich for being bold enough to bring awareness to the table that we will have to look beyond just that for us to be sufficient in our city. And so I rise today hoping to give you a visual of something that could be optimistic and forward-thinking for Mobile, for Alabama, for the United States of America. We were just hearing word from a member who's a citizen first, but also a part of a commission, talking about the National Register of Historic Places. We have another location right here in this city that is on the National Register of Historic Places. And we could find ourselves, if we were to commit to investing in that area, to where it could be a longstanding producer of economic fertility that I don't believe we've ever even thought about what it could really do. I don't think we've ever really looked at it because, very similar to what we're seeing now in District One, residential areas are being changed too much to a commercial position. And we've seen the businesses that were in the commercial area of this place that's on the National Register of Historic Places. We saw what it did to the health of citizens in that community after decades of pollution going into that area. We saw how businesses have moved out and not really contributing to the economic growth of our city as they were thought to do so long ago, but yet we have something that's there that should be preserved and looked at as something that's an heirloom, not just for Mobile, not just for the state of Alabama, but for this entire country. And all of us in here, I believe, know what that is. We're speaking of Africa Town. And then with the discoveries that we have in place now, why are we not honing in on finding ways to invest in that opportunity to expand this, our culture? Because it's everyone's culture. It's not just for one-sided. We looked at it with ethnicity. Because first, and there's a councilman who always speaks about this all the time, we're a human race first. The different contexts, other skin, none of that has anything to do. And I believe green, copper, silver, whatever, all that's going to spend the same regardless of who has it. So why are we not looking at how to build something rather than destroying the historic element of what it is? So we've seen some new discoveries. Some scientists have revealed some things to us, things that I know many of us and those who are privy to more information than the common citizen have known to be existing for quite some time. But yet we've allowed it to continue going and going and going and going away. But now we get so many signs. We get sign after sign after sign after sign of things that we really could be doing and how we collectively come to the table. I heard something today as well from the councilman that gave me a totally different insight on that individual as a person, as a leader, as an elected official, not the idea of trying to hone in on who you are to stand in complete opposition, but the idea that I just need to see what it is you want to do. So when there are things put in front of you to get them done, I want us to look at them. When there are opportunities for us to work collectively together, we need to truly take that serious because it's not up to you to just share this on your own as this table behind here, or these individuals right here. There are citizens who want to share the burden with you to move the city forward, to grow the economy, which is going to meet the most important thing when it comes to education, when it comes to the development of property, when it comes to so many things that we spend so much time on instead of looking at what's actually already there for us. So for those who celebrate, you know, Valentine's Day, wish you a happy Valentine's Day, I want to commend, because one thing, I was talking to a young kid on the way down here, and there was an incident that happened in his apartment complex. We, too, are going to have to ensure that the safety is in place for people to come and want to spend the money, to be a part of that. So I want to. So I want to commend our public safety officials for allowing us to have a happy carnival season, a safe carnival season. That shows some of the things that you all articulated right here as well in the midst of your meetings, preparing us to get to that point. And if we're going to move forward, looking at the economy, because that's a big economy boost, what we just left yesterday, this is a great way to do it. Let's look into Africa Town, how we can really preserve that area, really develop that community to make it the tourist attraction because it's a national heirloom. Thank y'all so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
CIP resolutions held over 21071 authorized contract of asphalt services for sidewalk repair and maintenance.
Move to layover for two weeks.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolutions held over 01, um, 09064 reallocate monies from capital projects, storm drain and pipes to grant fund to construct sidewalks along Osho Road.
Some move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 21074 authorized contract of Edmund G. Aslava III for appraisal services.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 31075 authorized tap agreement with the state of Alabama for sidewalks along Osho Road.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent resolutions being introduced for the first time, 37077 through 60081.
Motion to suspend rules for reconsideration of resolution 37077260081.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 37077, 37078 recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a nonprofit tax exempt license for 2018 chili cook-off from Mardi Gras Park on Government Street and for issuance of a special events retail license for Lucky Fest 2018 on Airport Boulevard.
Some move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 58079 and 080 declaring weeds noxious, Group 1577, and assess cost for removal of weeds, Group 1572.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 60081 approval award of special bonus to Katrina Fraser as part of the mayor's incentive program. Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? CIP resolutions being introduced for the first time, 01082 through 21086.
Motion to suspend rules for all CIP residents with the exception of 21085 and it would layover for one week.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? 01082 authorized memorandum of understanding with Mobile County for West Side Park entrance road, $10,186,069.
Some move. Second.
Can I discuss this?
Yes.
Did we get some additional information that our attorney was looking for as far as surveys and understanding of the future maintenance and obligation?
I'd like to meet with him this afternoon.
Okay. I would like to amend that to layover for another week till we can have that information and know that it's been secured.
I think the primary question is, will it be a public road? Whose public road is it? Because once you build a road and open it to the public, then there are certain liabilities that attach to the owner of the road. And I'm sure, I'm sure it's all right. They said they had surveys done.
I second the motion.
Well, then, there's a, there's a whole bunch of stuff that got to happen here. We already suspended the rules in that past.
Correct.
All right? Then we move to this one. Now, I don't even know how we get all the way back to where we were. I would ask Ms., while respecting her right to withdraw or withhold unanimous consent, that time has passed.
No, I moved an amendment, sir.
Well, I.
I understand, but then it takes five votes to do that. Here's the issue. We've got to get a whole bunch of people to a ballgame. And we all know that weather's already behind us on this issue. And if we can't change the pattern, and are we going to simply, by delay it, what is the, what's the option? And what's, and what is the objective? So it doesn't matter what Ms. Cochran comes back with. We're going to allow a right of way. Unless there's something I don't know. And again, we've already passed that point. I'd like to see it go through. Everything takes five votes. So I think, you know, vote no in this case or abstaining will achieve your objective, Ms. Rich.
I'm not, okay, thank you. Appreciate that dialogue. I understand the need to do this road and to partner with the county. However, I have some concerns. I did make them known at pre-council at our meeting. The issue is the city's maintenance of a road that, according to my map, that's in my office, that speaks to the borders of District Six, the park is not considered within the city limits. Anytime I've talked about West Side Park and sending funds or working with the entity that runs that, and it is a private group, and I applaud their efforts, like some of the parks out west that the city does control. But we have a relationship and we have a contract with them. I'm not sure if, if our end of it for making this an obligation of the city, if there's an accident, if there, if a child gets hurt on that gravel road, who does the parent go to? And I think that needs to be very clear. That's all I'm asking. I think it can be done in a week. And I learned about this last week and I met with the mayor. Like I said, I want to program with them. And they are taking, they're bidding it out or counties building the road. They're going to split half the cost. But again, it's a road. And normally, we take maintenance of roads. Did we ever take maintenance of the road that's already partially built? I don't know what the status is. And again, we don't program anything. And my communication with Parks and Recreation is that's not a park other than some simple maintenance that we help with, that we get involved in. So are we developing a new relationship? Perhaps that's ahead of us, and I'm not saying that's a bad thing.
Madam Clerk.
But I would like this to sit for a week so that we can understand exactly what our obligation is on West Side Park.
Ms. Richardson.
We can, we can either let Councilmember Rich amend this motion, or we can vote it down and let him put it back on here again next week. Whatever way you want to choose to do it, it's not going nowhere this week. Now, you can either let him amend the motion delayed over one week, or we vote it down and let him put it back on.
Well, a motion to, a motion to postpone takes precedence over the main motion. So you have to first deal with the postponement, isolate that.
Right.
And then deal with the main motion.
But he challenged that.
No, just, just a discussion.
All in favor?
May I say something before the vote?
Mr. Mayor?
West Side Park has been a bone of contention way before this administration assumed responsibility. It is a city park that's located in the county. The access to the park was cut off when the state sold their property. In an effort to establish a working relationship to help the city, allow the citizens that are using that park, the county took the initiative and said, use the road, which is a city, which is a dedicated street past the recycling center. We would add, let's call it a driveway. This is not a dedicated road. What we're doing is building access. They're already using it. There's already people that are driving, they're jumping the curb, driving over the exact spot where they will be driving to access the park. If there is something that's going to happen, and if it's in a city park, it doesn't matter if it's on a road or if it's in the park. If they're going to come after the city, what's the deal? Okay? When it comes to maintenance, if it's a city park, it's our responsibility to take care of it. And so arguing about who's going to take care of it. I mean, you requested a MOU to be written that when you and I met, we had the MOU drafted. I did not realize that we didn't draft it according to every wish that you had. But for us to delay it when we have the county stepping up and willing to put half the money into our city park to access our young people is just ludicrous. And so go ahead and vote. We'll deal with whatever you want to do. But I would hope that we would move forward with this because we've got other things to do other than worry about whether we're going to spend $9,000 on, in one of our parks going forward.
Madam Clerk, can you just go back and let us know exactly what the motion on the table is, what we're trying to vote on, so that we're all kind of on the same page here?
Okay, we had a motion to hear the, to discuss the resolution. And then we had a motion to layover, which supersedes the original motion.
Okay, so we need to vote on the amendment to lay it over for a week. All right.
All in favor of the motion to layover?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Opposed?
Okay, motion is failed for lack of five votes. And now we're back to the original motion. And second, all in favor?
Aye.
I would like to just discuss the original. So it's fine. And I'm very, very glad to hear that the city is interested in having West Side Park under our umbrella because really, there's very little interaction with the city as far as programming. So I look forward, and I think that's in a very good way. It's an area of town that hopefully will annex one day so that if we're strong in recreation out that way, that's a good thing. And so I look forward to that. Because honest to goodness, I've always been told that West Side was not really a city obligation or an interest within the. So coming from your office, that's probably a very positive thing for the, for those that use that service and for the community that volunteers its time out there. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 21083 authorized contract with Hutchinson Moore roused for Joe Bailey Park site survey and civil engineering.
Some move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 21084 authorized contract of net connection for Hank Aaron Stadium replaced netting and padding.
Some move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. 21086 authorized contract with Barter and Associates for Helen Wood Park Pavilion and Boardwalk Reconstruction.
Some move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 01091 through 35090.
All said, resolutions would layover for one week by council.
Second.
Announcements. I will start. Mr. Williams? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would like to thank the administration and all the city employees that's successful had made our Mardi Gras season 2018 a great success here in Mobile, Alabama. Don't remember hearing too much tragedy that went on. I'd like to thank the citizens for even putting up with the rain. It was a great day on yesterday as we paraded throughout the city of Mobile. It's amazing how it seemed like it was winter on Monday and yesterday seemed like a spring day. But again, I'd like to thank all the city employees for, you know, putting up great work to keep our city number one as far as in Mardi Gras. Also, I would like to make two great announcements that's coming up in District Three. On Tuesday, March 27th, we'll have a community-wide spring meeting at the Mary Bell Elementary School, which is located on Dolphin Island Parkway. Any citizen in District Three that have any concerns that like to be addressed, please contact me if I can have the appropriate department to be there at 208-7441 or either CJ dot small at cityofmobile.org. Again, that meeting will be on March 27th on a Tuesday, and also on Saturday, March 31st, the day before Easter, the day before April Fool's Day, we will have our sixth, our sixth annual Easter egg hunt at the Taylor Park, which is located on Baltimore Street, inviting all the citizens in District Three, especially kids from one to 12-year-old, to please come out to this family-friendly event. Again, this is the sixth one that we had, and this has always been a great success with plenty of food, Easter egg, and fun. And if anyone would like to volunteer for this Easter egg hunt, please contact me at 208-7441 or CJ dot small at cityofmobile.org. Again, District Three is the place to be. Thank you so much, Madam President. I mean, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Richardson.
Yes, real quickly, the Trinity Gardens Parade, the largest community parade in the history of Mobile, probably in history of several states, will take place Saturday, asking all our citizens to come out to that one. And I will be holding my Crighton District One Community Meeting at the Dumas Western Center that will be March 22nd, starting at 6 o'clock.
Ms. Rich. Thank you very much. First, I'd like to wish everyone a very happy Valentine's Day. Make it special, make it nice. And also, I'd like to thank everybody who helped pull the best parading party element in our city. Our Mardi Gras celebration was second to none and really is number one in our country. The police and fire and sanitation departments and revenue and everyone else who pulls together, it's City Clerk's Office is to be commended for all of their time and energy spent on creating that event, making everybody safe and sound. The weather for a Mardi Gras day was picture perfect, although leading up to it was not so good. So it was nice that it was rectified with a beautiful day yesterday. I'd also like to announce and thank the administration for working with my office in order to have a meeting for residents along the Hillcrest Corridor from Greelot to Cottage Hill. That meeting will be an open house, kind of like an Aladot meeting, where the plans will be there and people can ask their questions. The hours will be from 5 until 7:30 at the Connie Hudson Senior Center on Thursday, March 22nd. And I'll be sending postcards to interested people along that corridor and also having the information in the newsletter. Thank you.
Ms. Gregory?
Thank you. I too want to commend all of our city workers for their hard work during the Mardi Gras season. It is certainly a monumental task, and they are always up to the, up to the work and do a terrific job. So thank you so much for everyone, for all that you have done. When we leave here today, I'm sure the government and broad will look completely different than what it looked like when we drove in this morning. All of our crews were busily taking up the barricades. The streets had already been swept, and I saw all kinds of people out picking up all the extra beads and other litter and things that are just a part of Mardi Gras. So again, a big thank you to everyone who was involved. This past Friday, I participated in the annual Hillsdale Recreation Center Mardi Gras Parade. Birdie Anderson and her crew out at the Recreation Center always do a terrific job of putting this together for so many young children, for adults. Just a terrific effort for Birdie and the crew. They do more than just the parade. There was always lunch and special gifts and entertainment, so a big thank you to them. This coming Saturday, the Mobile Terrace Annual Motorcade, after Mardi Gras, same day as another parade that I know about, will take place, starting on Lincoln Boulevard. Yvonne Chambers is heading that, Chambers, rather, is heading that up this year. So look forward to that. Everyone is invited to come out on Lincoln and line the streets of Mobile Terrace for yet another Mardi Gras-style parade if you did not get enough. And then my district meeting is coming up February 27th. We will be at the Vision Center. If you're not familiar with where it is, it's at the corner of Princeton Drive and Forest Hill Drive. It's a former United Methodist Church. It is now called the Vision Center. We'll be there at 6 o'clock with plenty of guest speakers and information. Postcards should be hitting your mail soon if you have not already received one. And that is it from District Seven. Thank you.
And I too would like to express my sincere gratitude to the staff of the City Clerk's Office, including our mailroom employees and Jimmy Henderson, Robbie Joe Kelly, Roger Washington. Washington, Joanne Watson, and Kay Taylor and Chris Baer of the Mobile Police Departments for helping us out this weekend with the council riding in the parades. There's no further discussion. Motion is second to adjourn. Need to adjourn.
From off-site.